Dear God, we humbly ask your presence with us this evening as we look at the events of the day and look back as tomorrow again reminds us of the events of 9/11. Grant each of us the wisdom and guidance needed as we dream, plan, and make decisions for our city. Help us to work together effectively as we strive to serve our community.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome everyone. Let the minutes show, we have a forum tonight, and we're gonna start off with a very special presentation.
So, uh, this Friday is the opening of our new firehouse. So, we thought it was fitting to begin the celebration by recognizing one of the early members of Taylor Mill Volunteer Fire Department. And these volunteers were the backbone of the community, we all know. And it really was that we hope we're celebrating this event that we have coming up here on Friday with the opening of the new firehouse. So with that being said, we would like to honor one of the people that was very fundamental in the service to the community over the years, beginning in 1970, and that would've been Rita Hessler. Rita, would you mind coming up? I may add that Rita is just one of the many great examples of the contribution the community made. There are many, many people who would've been a part of this.
A lot, a lot.
So, we thought by honoring Rita, we would be able to, in a sense, honor everyone who participated all those years. So, with that being said, so Rita, whereas the city of Taylor Mill wishes to acknowledge and celebrate citizens, Mrs. Rita Hessler, for her invaluable contribution as a volunteer, and whereas Rita was born, I hate to say that while I'll tell your age.
Yes.
Okay, November 3rd, 1937.
That's correct.
Rising, rising sun in Indiana, so we got a Hoosier coming over this time.
That's correct.
Okay. She graduated in 1958 from the Digness Hospital School of Medicine in St. Louis, Ohio. I might add with Jerry Foster, who was a mentor, I guess, over those years, right? You and him, or you were a mentor to him.
I was not in that class.
She looks good to you. And Rita and her late husband moved to the city of Taylor Mill in the 1960s, where she continued to reside at Winston Hill Drive. Whereas Rita has become a member, became a member of the Taylor Mill Volunteer Fire Department Squad in 1973. That's a while ago.
It's a few years.
Yes, and serving in various capacities during a time when emergency calls were routed out of the burts across the street, right? So, those were, those were the days.
Yes, and then, you know, we went in the end of this building.
Right, the old Hillcrest Grocery, or whatever it was called.
Bob, it's Bob.
There you go. And whereas Rita had played a pivotal role in the fire department by dedicating countless hours, not only to riding on squad cars, also aiding and training and all the new volunteers that came along in the ongoing education efforts that required a D on the unemployment. Whereas Rita has made a positive impact on the lives of her family, friends, neighbors, parishioners, colleagues, coworkers, and community members, exemplifying personal character and trustworthiness and integrity. So Rita, for a lifetime achievement, reminding us of how important it is to have community involvement in the city of, you know, you love the city. So therefore, it resolved that the mayor, commission, and the staff in the city of Taylor Mill expresses their heartfelt gratitude to Mrs. Rita Hessler for her unwavering dedication and countless volunteer hours she generously devoted to the city. Signed by me, Mayor of the city of Taylor Mill. Mark, would you like to say a few words?
Just a few words, yeah. Rita, we're neighbors forever. I grew up on Winston Hill Drive. Rita and Bob moved in there later on with Robert and Rachel, and...
Actually, Robert was born there.
He was born there, yeah.
We moved there in May, and he was born in July.
That's great, yeah, but, you know, it's, I was born in 53, and he was in his 60s, and that's the only place I lived until I got married, so I've known you, I feel like for my whole life, and I just, I love you.
Basically, I actually was sort of somewhat like the neighborhood nurse. I had a battle with a blacktop on the street, so it was breaking. So, actually, a lot of the neighborhood children required some nursing care and broken arms and... But that was part of growing up, because it was a good neighborhood, and it still is a good neighborhood.
So, this proclamation is not only for Rita, but I think it exemplifies the desire we have to celebrate all of those people who, over the years, worked tirelessly to have Taylor Mill Volunteer Fire Department.
And I accept this on behalf of all the volunteers, whether it was your family, your firemen, your family, because we all donated that time. We wrote, the squad department did this. So basically, I accept this on all of the Taylor Mill volunteer people, whatever you all did to make this a better place for them.
This city was built on volunteers, and it is today because of the volunteers and what they did, otherwise we wouldn't have a city of Taylor Mill.
We would not have this gorgeous fire department here in this building, and I know it took a lot of work to make that work, so thank you all very much.
And I did say, yeah, I didn't sign up to speak just about her. Rita also, a lot of people may not realize this, went with the Taylor Mill Life Squad the night of the Beverly Hills Supper Club fire in, um, August, or excuse me, May of 1977, and literally worked there all night with the, you know, obviously how awful it was, and she did that.
And I worked with the UC's emergency group, that, with everything.
Yep, very much so, but she also, she was more than just a neighborhood nurse, she was a neighborhood nurse, and I think you set some broken arms in your kitchen. Sutured and everything, so she did it all here, so...
I'll tell you a real quick story about her husband, Bob, or your father, but he always said that he liked a big hunk of lonie in our city.
Well, thank you, Rita.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you as well.
Thank you, Rita. Thank you.
That was very great.
Can I go with you? Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Bye, Ms. Rita.
Okay, now for the business at hand, I'd like to call for a motion to approve the minutes of the August 13th, 2025 commission meeting. Motion to approve by Commissioner Crumbore, seconded by Commissioner Brayden. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Crumbore?
Yes.
Commissioner Brayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Murray?
Yes.
Mayor Bell?
Yes.
Commissioner Merritt?
I abstain, I wasn't here.
All right, secondly, the approval of the minutes for the August 27th, 2025 caucus meeting. Motion to approve by Commissioner Merritt, seconded by Commissioner Murray. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Merritt?
Yes.
Commissioner Murray?
Yes.
Mayor Bell?
Yes.
Commissioner Brayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Crumbore?
Yes.
Commissioner Murray?
Yes.
Mayor Bell?
Yes.
Commissioner Merritt?
I abstain, I wasn't here.
All right, secondly, the approval of the minutes for the August 27th, 2025 caucus meeting. Motion to approve by Commissioner Merritt, seconded by Commissioner Murray. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Merritt?
Yes.
Commissioner Murray?
Yes.
Mayor Bell?
Yes.
Commissioner Brayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Crumbore?
Yes. Now, we have the approval for the special commission meeting, which took place on September 3rd, 2025. Motion to approve by Commissioner Crumbore, seconded by Commissioner Brayden. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Crumbore?
Yes.
Commissioner Brayden?
Yes.
Mayor, Mayor Bell?
Yes.
Commissioner Murray?
Yes.
Commissioner Merritt?
Yes.
Anyone sign up to speak, Brian?
Yes, sir.
Ed Keeney, please.
Thank you for letting me speak. My name's Ed Keeney, I live at 5303 Old Taylor Mill. I want to talk about two things. First, I want to say thank you to the people, the women and men, who are picking up the trash along the Parkway and on Old Taylor Mill. I see one gentleman that's all the time doing his daily walk up and down Old Taylor Mill, picking up all the beer cans and all the other stuff that's on there, and I want to play tribute to him, and I'd recognize him if I could with a proclamation, as saying thank you, because this gentleman's done it for years and does a great job. My second part that I want to bring up is, when can we get Old Taylor Mill mowed? It's been since April since it's been mowed, and the grass is that deep. Old Taylor Mill was one of the first streets in this city, was a primary street in this city, and it's been neglected. Last year, it was mowed twice, and like, one of the times I complained about it, and it finally got it done, and we need to have it mowed again. When can we get it mowed?
It's scheduled to be mowed again in the fall, yet the commission wants to give me the money to contract it out, or wait until Jerry finishes his other projects, it'll be up to the commission.
Could you explain fall? Snow?
Prior, prior to snow. Yeah, Ed, I don't...
That's a joke. That's an absolute joke.
I would like to say something here if I can, please. We expect our residents to take care of their properties. We expect them to mow the right of ways and take care of it, if not, they get sited and fined. We should live up to the same standards that are, we expect our residents to live up to. Old Taylor Mill Road is terrible. If we're only getting it mowed twice a year, then we need to do something as far as stepping that up. I know that, I think Ed and Paul, and Roger and Judy Reese, and some of the other ones, they get together a few times a year, and they walk Old Taylor Mill Road and pick up all the trash along there. We don't do that. Our residents are doing that for us. To have that, to have a right of way, the city right of way, to mow twice a year, and we expect more of that from our residents, then shame on us, we should, we should do something to keep our roadway looking nicer than what we are, because it's a disaster right now.
I don't want to bring up hard feelings, but we're mowing the county's property and the state property every three weeks. Right, Jerry?
No, the Parkway, yeah.
About every three weeks. We're mowing theirs, and we don't even own it. We have nothing to do with it. We have a contract with them to do it.
We had an agreement with them when they built that, that we would take care of it.
Okay. How would you like to have an agreement with the residents of Old Taylor Mill to take care of it? Sorry, I have to...
Okay, thanks, Ed.
I have to vent my frustration, because I, and Brian, you know, I've been asking you since April, since it was done last time, when's the next time gonna come? And I keep hearing it later and later.
It usually, it usually, it costs about seventeen thousand every time we have a cut. Well, because we do the, all of the property, all the right of ways.
All the right of ways where?
In the city. All the property, all the property that's sort of kind of people don't maintain, because mainly, the majority of the people maintain the right of way, like on Taylor Mill Road, all those private property owners own it, so, or take care of it. So basically, down there on Taylor Mill Road, my, my priority is just making sure that there's site distance. It's not to maintain this, and it's a commission once that, that absolutely will happen, but it's...
I'm gonna bring up something else, Fire Chief. We got one fire hydrant that has got mowed around, or somebody cleaned around it, Roger Reese did it, by the way.
Okay.
And there's probably a half a dozen fire hydrants there that are under the weeds. You won't be able to find them at nighttime. That's another safety record, a safety part of it. Why Jerry couldn't put the bushwhacker on the front of his bobcat and go to work for somebody for three or four hours, they could do Taylor Mill all the way.
Thanks, Ed. All right, anyone else?
Debbie Vaughn.
Okay.
Larry Means.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, now we're gonna move on to legislation. We got ordinance for 12, second reading, Oliver.
This is an ordinance of the city of Taylor Mill in Kenton County, Kentucky, providing for the annual assessment of all real estate and personal property, then the corporate limits of the city of Taylor Mill, and the ad valorem taxation thereof for the fiscal year beginning on July 1st, 2025, and ending on June 30th, 2026, and providing for the payment and collection of such taxes, and the penalties and interest thereon, and describing the purpose for which the taxes so collected shall be appropriated and used. It appears as an ad valorem tax on real property at the rate of .368 dollars for each $100 of the value of that property, and then an ad valorem tax on all personal property at the rate of .57, .570 dollars for each $100, and these are due on December 31st, 2025.
Okay.
Those rates have actually gone down this year, right?
Correct. It did go down, yeah. Motion to approve that by Commissioner Merritt, seconded by Commissioner Crumbore. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Merritt?
Yes.
Commissioner Crumbore?
Yes.
Commissioner Brayden?
Yes.
Mayor Bell?
Yes.
Commissioner Murray?
Yes.
All right, ordinance number 413, second reading, waste collection fee.
This is an ordinance of the city of Taylor Mill in Kenton County, Kentucky, imposing a solid waste collection fee on all single-family residential lots and structures in the city and the owners thereof for the period of July 1st, 2025 to June 30th, 2026. The city of Taylor Mill is going to provide for the collection, removal, and disposal of solid waste through a contract with a private collector, and the fee will be $245 each year.
All right, motion to approve. Mr. Murray, seconded by Commissioner Brayden. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Murray?
Yeah.
Commissioner Brayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Merritt?
Yes.
Commissioner Crumbore?
Yes.
Mayor Bell?
Yes. So now I want to vote on the approving the proclamation that we just presented to bring up. Motion to approve, Commissioner Crumbore, seconded by Commissioner Murray. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Crumbore?
Yes.
Commissioner Murray?
Yes.
Mayor Bell?
Yes.
Commissioner Brayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Merritt?
Yes.
Okay, under new business, we have the approval of the SD1 Cost Sharing Program Agreement for 707 Winston Hill Drive.
So, in your packet, I gave you information and application from Ann Comberton to solve a water, of stormwater issue on her property. The city's committing to our third, which would be $1,833.33.
Any comments or questions on that?
This is standard program.
All right, motion to...
I'll make a motion.
By Commissioner Murray, seconded by Commissioner Brayden. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Murray?
Yes.
Commissioner Brayden?
Yes.
Mayor Bell?
Yes.
Commissioner Crumbore?
Yes.
Commissioner Merritt?
Yes.
All right, the next item of new business, acceptance of a memorandum of agreement with the Kenton County Fiscal Court to participate in the Kenton County Community Redevelopment Plan. Brian?
So basically, this is an agreement that you're, can make with the, with the county to accept funds for redevelopment of city properties, or city-owned properties, or to purchase properties. It's a program where the fiscal court has agreed to give the city up to $805,500 to do that project with a requirement of a 10% match.
Okay, motion to approve that. Mr. Barrett, seconded by Commissioner Brayden. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Merritt?
Yes.
Commissioner Brayden?
Yes.
Mayor Bell?
Yes.
Commissioner Crumbore?
Can I just clarify one thing first? It's, it's actually $895, and they're giving us 90% of that. It's not, it's not 90% of 805,000.
No, they're giving us eight hun, up to 805,000.
Just wanted to make sure by...
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. That you're asking me.
Yes.
And Commissioner Murray?
All right, did you?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you for that. All right, now, acceptance of the Northern Kentucky Ad District Memorandum of Understanding for Regional Procurement Corporation.
So in the past, the state has always had a vehicle state purchase agreement, and for a couple of years, they've not done it for whatever reason. The Ad District is now stepping up, and they're kind of filling in that void. They're gonna go out and do a cooperative agreement to purchase state vehicles, and if the city, or any city that wants to, can ride along with that. So I'm just asking you guys to participate in this agreement in case we want to purchase property, or purchase vehicles through their program.
It'd be like police cruisers?
Police, absolutely.
Laneas trucks, yeah.
Yeah.
Brian, so this is in lieu of the thing we're doing with...
Yes, we have our agreement with Enterprise, and we can still use Enterprise, but we can also, if we had this, we could also look at this, and if we get a better deal here...
See if there's something...
Yes, it just gives you another option.
Okay.
All right, so, motion to approve by Commissioner Murray, seconded by Commissioner Brayden. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Murray?
Yes.
Commissioner Brayden?
Yes.
Mayor Bell?
Yes.
Commissioner Crumbore?
Yes.
Commissioner Merritt?
Yes.
All right, the next item on new business is acceptance of purchase agreement for purchase of property. Brian?
So you guys have, we've extended purchase offers on two properties, or three properties, 650 South Mason and 675 and 677 Ridge Road. The purchase price for 650 South Mason, $350,000, for 675 and 677 Ridge Road, $250,000.
Okay, motion to approve?
Yeah, I think we need to explain, yeah, I will, I need to explain a little bit more. This is, this is why most of you are here tonight.
Yeah.
This is where the first order of business came in, that we did not approach any of the, of the homeowners. We cannot take any of the property by eminent domain. The law's changed years ago, and we cannot do that through the ability we have, but we were approached by them. The, the agreement we just passed with Kenton County Fiscal Court through PDS is a grant that will allow us to, will allow us to pay 10% of the price of the property, and the grant from the Kenton County Fiscal Court will pay 90% of the price of the property. So in essence, we can buy, and we don't have a purchase agreement for one of the properties yet, but we can buy almost $900,000 worth of property for $95,000. So, they came to us, we didn't go to them, and it just so happens that all the stars aligned, the puzzle fell in the place, Mr. Walking contacted Brian about what it would take for him to be able to sell his property, you know, Ken, and, and Brian talked to him and said, you know, we're at this point in time, we're in conversations with West, Mr. West approached the city about his two parcels, and asked if we would be interested in buying those parcels. We said we would be interested. That's when Mr. Walking contacted Brian and said, what do I need to do? And he said, would you be interested in selling your, you know, your property to the city? And if so, how much do you want for it? It just turns out, the two Mr. Browns that live back there, one of them unfortunately passed away, and the one, Mrs. Bowles, or whatever her name is, she approached the city and said, now that, now that one Mr. Brown is gone, they're interested in selling their property, is the city interested? I mean, it just turned out that these properties were coming into place all at the same time. If I'm, am I wrong?
Yes, sir.
No, I didn't, and it just turned out that the county, Kenton County Fiscal Court, has got $5 million in funds that they are willing to put out in a, in a, in a grant. I know Independence is interested in some of that money, but they have not met the criteria to get that money. We are the first and only city so far that's met that criteria from what has come together. As far as, and I'll leave this to Oliver, but as far as taking property by eminent domain, we cannot by law take your property by eminent domain. I mean, years ago, I think they had the ability to do that. Larry talked about Matt Tobin, that was years ago. Those laws have changed. I think if we didn't have the property next door to build our firehouse, that's a governmental property, we probably could've came down there and said, we need that property, and we would've had to clear it through the state to approve it, but that was something that was public. The state went through and bought properties for Parkway, that was for public use, but we cannot by law, Oliver, correct me if I'm wrong, he's the attorney, but we cannot purchase up any property through eminent domain for developmental purposes. Oliver, would you like to clarify that?
I believe you're correct. It's been a while since I've touched on eminent domain, brings me back to law school, but I think you're correct on that point.
Mr. Crumbore, I have a question. I'm not supposed to speak, so I have to...
Pat, please come up here so we can get on the microphone.
I also want to explain that if, if that property is sold by the city after we purchase it, we give the, the money back to Kenton County Fiscal Court. So the city will not be profiting from this, hopefully with development, but we will not be profiting from this.
Well, we already have a raccoon house in our neighborhood. Are these other two houses going to become raccoon homes also?
No.
No.
How can we even guarantee that? I mean, we put up with raccoons.
The city is looking into private enterprise to rent the properties out for the city with a, no, we won't make any profit at all, but in terms, it will be taken care of. So that's what the city, this all came together, Martha's trying to explain, we were approached...
Yeah, we all know that, we know the story. I mean, don't we?
And we, we, I mean, we're getting this money as long, as long as we don't sell that property. We can donate it to anybody who wants it, for as long, if we sell it, then we must pay back to the state, what's actually the state grant, county is running it, we have to pay it back. But if we don't sell it, we don't have to pay it back. We don't have to develop it, it can sit there for 10, 20, 30 years. It's, when somebody comes and says, hey, we want to do this, we say, well, you gotta do with all these other people first before you come to us. This just gives us a, a hand in the game, so to speak, so that if somebody comes in and says, well, we'd like to put something in there that we don't want in our city, we can say, no.
Well, my, my, you know, you know that I, we live right next door to the raccoon house.
Yeah.
And if you buy Brown's property, are you going to demolish Brown's house? Are we going to keep on having our neighbors, black or white neighbors?
And I would think that we would have to demolish that house. It's not habitable, it's not worth keeping. I'm not so sure with the other two homes that we wouldn't, we have not really sat down and discussed exactly what we're gonna do with those two homes. As Commissioner Murray said, maybe we'll run them, but then again, maybe we will just tear them down, because we're going to come uninhabitable and eyesore. So we are gonna have future meetings on exactly what we will do with those properties, so...
I just want to say, suffice to say, the property will be cared for in a proper way. Grass cutting, which we know has been a problem at that particular next to it.
Oh, Brown's? Heavens, no.
Well, the falling down of the gutters and the raccoons, that's what I meant.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anyway, it's gonna be taken care of. That city will, will make sure of that.
That Brown property's gotta come down. It, it can't be repaired.
No, the basement's gonna be in, and...
Oh, it's, it's in bad shape.
It's been vacant four years, so...
I was a skeptic of all this, and the more I heard, the more I realized that the county was doing us a favor to help these blighted areas that are not being taken care of, and paying the majority of the cost to do it. So then it started to make sense to me, and I thought, well, if we're not buying them ourselves, and we're not pushing anyone to sell, we're not trying to get people out of their homes, none of us that I know of would ever want to do that, so...
Trust me, we're not moving.
That's okay, and please let me say this, that the property, the prices that they presented to us were the prices we're paying for the property.
Yeah. Well, has, have Mert and Rodney given you a price on their property yet?
Yeah, we can't talk about it, we're still negotiating.
You gotta understand, this was, they came to us, we didn't go to them.
Oh, I know, we know, we know.
Did you watch your motorcycle?
Ed's talking about weeds and cutting, we're, that's, talking about taking care of the houses, this, that's the difference. Yeah, all right. Well, yeah, it is, we'll, we'll cut the grass.
We have to contract for grass, or-
We'll, we'll cut the grass, I mean-
We have to contract out on Taylor Mill Road, we don't have a bat wing mower.
Yeah.
So that's the difference between taking care of property, you know, flat property that our public works people are capable of taking care of. We have to contract out and pay for these other right of ways.
It's gonna be taken care of, we'll get it done.
You know, we told you last Wednesday that we would be as transparent as we could, but we had to wait till today.
And then with the-
And we're trying to be as transparent as we can and let you know what's going on.
And we, we figured that, but still, we had to play the game, so to speak.
Okay.
So when we know we're sort of renting it out?
You'll have to, I- There'll have to be discussions with the commission, we'll have to do it at a later time.
We, we haven't decided that, that, that's one possibility. But that, that has to be decided in a meeting. That's not one person, it's, the whole commission will have to decide what's gonna happen.
The West property definitely needs a big cleanup, for sure. And the Brown property, absolutely. So it'll be taken care of, you, we're not, nothing-
Right, I think just us, you know, we're happy that the, that you all were just wanting to know what was gonna happen, and, you know, this way we, you know, got a better idea of what's gonna happen.
Well, we couldn't say anything until the fiscal court met.
Oh, I get that, I just-
And the fiscal court, we, we didn't know for sure until the fiscal court met and voted to approve it.
And those properties will be in our names soon, but we don't have the authority to go on their property and take care of it today.
Right, yeah.
Take it, we'll have a closing and all that kind of stuff. And we're doing it with the county funds, but, yeah.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
And everybody, and, you know, in terms of grass and things of that nature, I, you know, we, I can tell you, Jerry and his crew do, does the best they can with the man-hours that they have. Right now, they're doing streets on Ridge, what's it, Ridge Side?
Ridge Side?
Yeah.
Ridge Side and Lakewood.
And Lakewood, so they're concrete working streets. Now, there's only, we only got four guys, so, so as soon as they move off of that project, we can get over to, like Brian said, sometime this fall, to do that grass cutting. And we got grass cutting everywhere, at the top of Mason Road, we got, we have grass cut up there, we got grass cut everywhere. And Ed should know that we get to it when we can. It's not the number one priority, maybe it's number eight or nine, but number one is street repair, you know, and down the ladder, so. Appreciate your interest, though, and we'll do it. Thanks, Ed.
Debbie?
Debbie Vaughn, um, I didn't quite catch the numbers that you initially said that you all were paying, would you mind to repeat those?
Two fifty on the West, two parcels.
Okay.
Three fifty on Woking.
Okay. Two fifty each, or two fifty total?
Total, yes.
That's what, what I was confused about. With regard to the mowing, I mean, I grew up in that neighborhood, I still know most of the neighbors, we have, my daughter's living there now, so I do have concerns, and I wasn't so familiar with what was being talked about, about the mowing on Old Taylor Mill, because I don't drive down that way that much. Um, but I do, this is a neighborhood, so, I know you say it will be mowed, I hope that's on a regular frequency. I, I know most of you for a very long time, so I hope that is assured. The other thing is, um, with regard to tearing down properties and that, so far, the pipeline that has gone through has been a bit of a bother, but I think they have done a fairly decent job of keeping things clean and tidy and being respectful. And I just ask that you all make sure whoever you contract with that that continues.
And please remember, that's the interest to our city. You know, we want it to look good, you know?
My daughter's at home mowing the grass right now to make sure it stays the way the property is.
How much she charge per hour?
She does need to make some more money.
All right, thanks, everybody, for that.
I forget, did we vote on that?
When we asked, why did we interrupt it?
Didn't we? Where you voted? We gotta vote, we did, no. Do we have a motion already?
All right, so, wait a minute.
Wait a minute, hold on, what do we got?
You were making a motion, but then you were clarifying.
Yeah, you stopped.
Okay, I will make that motion.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Crandall, second by Commissioner Merritt, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Crandall?
Yes.
Commissioner Merritt?
Yes.
Commissioner Brayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Murray?
Yes.
Mayor Bell?
Yes. All right, so moving on to department reports, City Administrator, Brian?
I have nothing to add from my report.
Good.
Tanya, City Treasurer?
You guys have my reports, if you have any questions, I have nothing to add in regards to the reports, but I just want to let you know that our accountants will be out next week, uh, Wednesday, Thursday, or Wednesday, Friday, to finalize, uh, fiscal year twenty five. And then our audit is scheduled, audit review, audit review is scheduled for October twenty seven through thirty first.
Very good.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Sean, Sean's not here today, our engineering report's not here. You want to comment on anything engineering wise, but where are we at with Vincent Drive or anything like that?
No?
Okay.
How about sidewalks, will you comment about sidewalks?
So, we are still, most, anybody who's involved along Taylor Mill Road, if your property, we have the need of any acquisition for any temporary easements or anything, the, uh, company Dun Robin, who we contracted with to go out and meet with everyone, is already, that's in process, and that is ongoing. So I think there are a total of thirty-three parcels that we're having to get, uh, easements on, and most have already signed, uh, there's a few others that we're just working out some kinks. So once that happens, then we can actually put it out for bid for construction. But at this late stage in the game, I'm gonna guess that it's not gonna happen till next summer.
I have to tell you, I, the stuff I see, I, I don't go on, I don't post on Facebook, but most, much, but the stuff I see, they don't read the, they don't listen to the meetings on, on, on internet, they don't come to the meetings, and I don't know how many times, those of you who do come, we have said multiple times, this sidewalk issue is not our fault in terms of the delays, and it's, the state has been a bear to work with. And, you know, so we have to have this, every property has to be, first of all, every property had to be evaluated from a historical perspective. That was thirty-five thousand dollars to do that. And then the property, each property has to be assessed, and we have to have a signed agreement, and that takes time. And it's, I wish that, I can't wait till I can say we're gonna start construction, you know, really.
The good news is, we're in the final phase. This is really the final phase.
We are, we're finally headed toward home plate, but man, it's been a, with COVID and the money, we got this money five years ago, so.
There was somebody on Facebook that said, that said he got the money, but instead of spending the money to save money, they lowered the speed limit from forty-five down to thirty-five.
So, bottom line is, tell all your friends and neighbors, we really want this sidewalk built, and it's not necessarily the commission's fault that it's not being done. He's mentioned thirty-three people still have to sign off on giving us the right of way. And I don't know, there's people who object, why people, somebody would object to have a sidewalk in front of your house? I don't know, but I, I like my sidewalk in front of my house. So, anyway, I don't, I'll put that to bed. Hopefully, we'll be able to have a contract bid some point in time and get the construction started. I agree with you, it probably won't be till spring of twenty twenty-six, oh my gosh. Okay, um, fire, Dan?
Okay, for the month, we had eighty-seven total calls, uh, sixty-four EMS rescue and twenty-three fire department service. New trade given, one to Covington, and five to Rhode Island. New trade received, five from Covington, one from Fort Wright, one from Rhode Island. AOS call breakdown was forty-two AOS, DLS was twenty-two, total hospital transport was forty-eight. Want to take the rest, too?
Sure, I can do that. Uh, we had nine fire inspections last month, uh, no re-inspections. Uh, let's see, we had ninety-four training hours, eighty EMS training hours. And we've been just working a little hard on trying to get moved in the new firehouse and all that setup, and Friday will be the ribbon cutting.
What time will that be, Chief?
Three o'clock, three to five.
Well, Yoko House, three to five, right?
Yep, yep. Sounds like a tour, see?
Come in and look at everything.
Well, I'm excited about that, that's a long time coming, so.
Very exciting.
All right, so, I, Oliver, I know you're new, but legal counsel, anything?
Nothing from me.
Okay, Parks and Recreation, Commissioner Brayden?
Well, the good news of the day is the ribbon cutting for the firehouse, and they already brought that up, but show up at three, it's, I, I walk through it, it's worth, worth checking out, it's worth seeing. It's a, it's an unbelievable change for our firemen and their health and their well-being and, and our future of the city, because having that firehouse will, will make it easier for us to get firemen, it will make it easier for us to get businesses to come here. It's, it's, it's a really futuristic step for the city, so I'm, I'm really proud of the city and the fire department. That, I just had to say, um, you don't, I'm gonna, uh, just, there's a concert Saturday, String Theory, at the park. I'm gonna let Christie talk a little bit more, she's got some other events here planned, let her give you the scoop on that.
There will be food trucks there at the concert event, uh, La Song Pinoy and Sugar Snap will be there, um, Saturday, and that's from seven to nine. And then, um, the Scott High School Homecoming Parade is on Friday, September nineteenth. I'm sure Chief Mills will be, um, giving all of the, uh, information out to, um, the residents. I know he's already done a mail-out to, um, subdivisions that are impacted by the parade, but, um, he'll be giving a little more detail out to everybody else, I'm sure. And then, um, Center Point will be having their Fall Festival, um, on October the twenty-fifth.
Police, Commissioner Crandall?
Thanks, Mayor. I have something I wanted to bring up real quick first, and something I'm really proud of, is that my son-in-law, Jimmy, their family lives out in Morningview, his uncle Jack was in Vietnam in the army, and today he is on the honor flight to Washington DC, and they are so excited about that. I just want to congratulate him, he's eighty years old, and he is just in his glory. So I want to congratulate Uncle Jack on his honor flight to Washington DC today, so. Next, uh, everybody, here's the report from the Police Department, and if you have any questions, you can ask Chief Mills, and I'll turn to Chief Mills, and Chief, I'm sure you will touch on the Scott High School Parade also, please.
Just as a matter of our foster service program, um, uh, we have one thousand eight hundred and eight public contacts with people, whether they're calling 911 or, uh, non-emergency emergency dispatch, or self-initiated activity, three hundred and twenty-eight of those are business checks and vacation checks, um, so they stay pretty busy. As far as the Homecoming Parade is concerned, it will be Friday, uh, it is currently scheduled for Friday, but I do need the commission to please, uh, approve that request from the school, um, because I can notify the state as well. So if we could get an approval on their request to have it, um, I certainly hope we get that, 'cause if not, um, we've got a big problem going forward on Friday.
Chief, what, chief, it's Friday, September nineteenth, not this Friday?
That's correct.
Okay, not this Friday.
It is the nineteenth, um, and it will start at six o'clock, uh, we used to wait till the tank bus, but we'll start at six, we will go southbound from Mill Valley, uh, to Scott, so we'll go, uh, southbound on, uh, Taylor Mill Road, and then, uh, north on the Parkway to the, to Scott.
There is no longer the tank bus.
That's correct. Yep, so we used to have to wait until the six o'clock bus went through, but, uh, sometimes that put us a little behind schedule, but we will start right at six, um, and we will hopefully progress right along.
We don't have bus service anymore out here, right, Ed?
Right.
Anyway, I got one motion to approve the Scott Parade, do I have a second?
Yes.
By Commissioner Murray?
Dan.
Roll call vote.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Commissioner Brayden?
Yes.
Mr. Crandall?
Yes.
Commissioner Merritt?
Yes.
Mayor Bell?
Yes. All right, that's taken care of, okay, Public Works?
Um, it sounds like we're gonna be putting more work on Public Works, which they'll take care of. Um, of course, mowing takes a lot of their time, but thank goodness this month, they were able to start on some concrete streets on Ridge Side in Lakewood, um, tear out in the replacing blocks, so, and Jerry, you're doing a really good job. So, anyway, I'll let Jerry tell you everything else.
That's, pretty much everything's in my, uh, in my, uh, my record. We've just been busy on concrete, lot of projects and stuff going on. The, uh, the mowing is three times with Merkel, we ride, a state did, it does the county as they come through the county, doing county state roads. Merkel does ours three times a year. We don't dictate when they roll through, they do the scheduling with Kenton County and say, you know, I'll call them up, and they'll say, well, we're running through Campbell County, we'll get you next, or whatever. They got their schedule, we, we can't interrupt their schedule because they just do a train, do the whole Northern Kentucky, Merkel does. But we're contracted for three years, and we stayed in this three, or twice so far. And I just turned in, I just turned in a Merkel bill recently, you know, for the last cutting, and all they do is bush hog along the roads. Now, if you're talking about wide of ways, site distance, and the trees pushback, that's what runs into seventeen, eighteen thousand dollars and requires a contractor, whether, whether it be the county. They did come out and start on our projects earlier this year, where their machine broke down, they said they were behind in a lot of their mowing, too, because it was broken down before we had them come over and start doing some part of tree bushes pushback, so they pulled off us to repair it and do some of their stuff, and they said they would come back in the fall to do what we might want done more, but the grass is, like, just done three times by Merkel. When they do Kenton County and all the stuff they do for the state, and they do ours also, we ride their contract, and we pay-
So it's three, Ed, I was wrong, I told you two.
We, we pay their, we, we pay, you know, their fee for mowing, but when they come through and they do, like, the rest of Taylor Mill and all that, and you see them out there, they go through our roads, too, at the same time, the same as they do the state roads three times a year. No, I have no, I have not, no, I haven't called back and said, you know, I have seen them on the interstate, and it's Merkel with the tractors, but they mow a lot of stuff, so by the time, by the time they get back around for their next trip through, the grass has gotten pretty high before they can hit it again. I'm pretty sure they, they hit one this summer after that, because they did it right around, uh, Memorial Day, wasn't it, we were trying to get them out here by Memorial Day, and I think they were here a week after that. No, I'm talking, maybe they went through the town.
All right. Thank you, thank you, Jerry.
Sorry.
All right, any comments from the commission before I ask for adjournment?
Do the announcements?
Well, we, we've already, we've already did the fire-
Okay, that's fine, we just-
We already did the, uh, Friday part, but the other announcement is the concert at Pride Park, Friday, seven to nine, Scott High School Parade, and the next caucus meeting is Wednesday, September twenty-fourth. With that, I call for a motion to adjourn, because Ryan, or second by Commissioner Merritt, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Crandall?
Yes.
Commissioner Merritt?
Yes.
Commissioner Murray?
Yes.
Mayor Bell?
Yes.
Commissioner Brayden?
Yes.